Everybody please stand for the flag salute. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Public Meeting, Thursday, June 7, 2018. The time is 7:58. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Notice that this meeting was published in December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star-Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to switch around the agenda a little bit. First thing I'll do is run with the Proclamations. Commissioner Patraco?
Thank you. Yes, we have a proclamation here for our fallen firefighters that we had. And as I said in the back, we were really fortunate to have our fire department and everyone in town who cares, that we got a beautiful monument. And I want to again thank Commissioner Tucci's department for all your help. The monument came out beautiful and, you know, all the firefighters helped and everybody that was involved, it was really, really well done. And it couldn't be better than having an on-memorial day to ceremony. So, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas between the years of 1938 and 1942, four Nutley firemen lost their lives in service to the township of Nutley. Whereas Tom Hickey Woodruff was career Nutley firefighter from 1931 to 38. He was married to Mary Webster Woodruff, and they had two children together, Thomas Junior and Nancy. In his younger years, he was known as a great baseball player. He received the nickname "Hickey" because of his fondness for establishing Hickory Nut Hunts. On February 11, 1938, he died from falling off a six-foot ladder in headquarters. And whereas Captain Frank Zimmerman was a career Nutley firefighter from 1922, 23 to 1939, he was married to May Owens Zimmerman. Frank was named the very first firefighter once department turned career. In February of 1928, he was promoted to captive. For a number of years, he had taken great interest and spent many hours repairing toys for town's poor children at Christmas time. On September 13, 1939, Captain Frank Zimmerman experienced having a coronary embolism upstairs in the fire department and passed away while on duty. And whereas Andrew Miller was a career Nutley firefighter from 1929 to 1941, he was married to Anna Mae Miller and left behind three-year-old son when he passed. On November 8, 1941, the fire department responded to 66 elm plies on the report of a work in fire. Andrew entered the basement by himself to suppress the fire and slipped going down the stairs and broke his neck and fractured his skull. Captain Earl Manning went down to rescue him but also slipped and broke his own ankle, but continued to search for him and was able to carry him out. He was then transported to St. Mary's Hospital in Passaic where he was pronounced dead. And whereas Edward Stroba was a career Nutley firefighter from 1924 to 1942, he was a widower from his late wife, Virginia Seagan. As a child, Edward took up a great interest in running and fishing as his hobbies. On the evening of December 9, 1942, just days before Edward was going to announce his engagement to his girlfriend Catherine Stegna, a fire broke out in Catherine's home at 75 Williams Street. Edward tried fighting in fire but was overcome by smoke. Outside, he was given emergency medical treatment by a chief of police along with a few other men. Moments later, the town physician ordered for Edward to be transported to the hospital where he was later pronounced dead of smoke suffocation. And now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, the U.S. state of New Jersey, that these four Nutley firemen be recognized and commended for their service to duty and for their selfless dedication to the residents in the township of Nutley. This is a proclamation, so we won't vote, but it's very interesting to me because even myself until I became a commissioner here, I didn't realize that we even had a paid fire department going back that far and that unfortunately we lost some lives back then. So, it's a Nutley tradition that we always go above and beyond. And I just want to again thank the firemen and everybody who took part in putting that monument and having these guys' names on those plaques for eternity. I think that's a pretty big deal. So, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And let me say that we have a lot of monuments in town. I don't think there's a more beautiful monument than that monument. It's gorgeous. It stands out. And the Parks Department and everybody who was involved in the construction and design, you should be congratulated for constructing a monument to honor these four individuals. So, thank you to all involved and congratulations. First of all, I'm sure all of us here in this room and a good overwhelming majority of the 29,000 people who live in this town believe that you are the best of the best. I mean, really mean that. Commissioner Patraco used a word that we don't hear much around us, and that word is tradition. You know, I'm looking and I'm reading and I'm saying, "Boy, isn't this really nice, a pleasure, to see the Nutley Fire Department strengthen the customs and traditions of this great township we live in?" And maybe years from now, your children, my grandchildren, are going to walk down Chestnut Street and they're going to see that monument and they're going to read about this. And what you have allowed us to do is to give something to our children, our grandchildren, and future generations of people who live in this town. You've given us history. And Mr., I'm sorry, Commissioner Patraco, you're right. I had no idea, no idea. Thank you. Thank you for sharing this with us, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, I think a wonderful job was done by the fire department, in particular Dominic De Simone and Mike LaCourte because this was actually their vision, all right? And then they came to speak to us about it in the Parks Department to see if there was any way we could help. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Lou Malfettano, who pretty much with Dominic and Mike took the bull by the horns. They came up with the design. I don't think it could have come out any better. It's a beautiful monument. It's a great testament to not only the folks who are on there, but also to the entire fire department. So, I want to congratulate all of you and thank you for putting forth that effort.
Just overall, I was honored to be part of the ceremony. It's just the tradition of Nutley to recognize people from all walks of life. And it's just very special to recognize firefighters of our town. There's many people who debate the cost of our services, but nothing replaces the fact that they're there, that you guys are selfless and you're caring for our people and people in need, and you're willing to do what many people are unwilling to do. So, again, it was just an honor for me to be a part of it.
Thank you, guys. Let's, yeah.
Mayor, if I might, just one more brief statement because unfortunately oftentimes we overlook someone, and I think we have overlooked someone in this instance, and that's Commissioner Patraco, all right? Who allowed, you know, you folks to move forward and to come up with that beautiful design and to have that there so that everyone can see it and everyone could appreciate it. So, Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your help.
Dominic, do I say anything? And then we'll take a picture with you guys.
Mayor, real quick, I'd just like to ask that Commissioner Tucci will allow us to have the monument built in that location and everyone's help in getting this through. This wasn't easy, long time, but all members of the fire department with a career involved here, everyone helped out and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Let's take a picture, guys. Yeah, we're definitely, absolutely, yeah. Ed, you're up. Hope they can't read that good. Commissioner Evans, you want to introduce the assessor?
I'm waiting for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last several months, there's been a lot of questions raised regarding the assessed value of property in town, especially since the revaluation of the town that occurred in 2006 and the changes that occurred since we, in that intervening time. So, I thought it would be valuable to have the assessor provide a short presentation to highlight aspects of the history for the town, as well as his duties and responsibilities, his governance, his independence, and provide some, I think, some insightful information. One of the points that I think there's quite a bit of confusion around relates to an assessor's function around something called a compliance plan, which can be done in, and Ed will talk about it more specifically, but the question that was raised about land value adjustments, which there's been quite a bit of confusion about that, and I felt that it would be valuable, one, to have an open presentation, and two, to make sure that Ed in his presentation addresses that specific confusion. So, Ed, I'm going to turn it over to you as our tax assessor of the town. I want to share is that Ed is very unassuming. He's a gentle giant in his nature. However, he's very accomplished and highly qualified. So, with that, Ed, thank you, and you're on.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. So, yeah, I'll try to be as brief as I can, but basically what I want to speak about today is what my function is here, how the role of the assessor is governed by state and local rules, and also to speak about how assessments change. So, what I'm going to begin with is speaking about the position of the assessor, and I'm basically going to quote a few lines from the New Jersey Handbook of Assessors, and from there kind of summarize what that all means. So, from this slide here, "Assessors, though selected and appointed by municipal officials, are public officers whose duties are imposed by and defined in state law. When assessing property for taxation, the assessor performs a governmental function as an agent of the state legislature. The position of assessor takes on a judicial quality in determining taxability and assessments of property. In discharging these duties, an assessor is not subject to the control of a municipality. The intent is that assessors, like judges, should be free to perform their duties without fear and must be immune from pressure and harassment." So, basically what this means is that I'm an employee of the township. I was appointed by the Board of Commissioners. However, the Board of Commissioners are not my supervisor. I deal directly, well, not deal, I should say, but my direct supervisor is the Essex County Board of Taxation and the tax administrator. That's how the position is set up throughout the state. It's done so that I would never get pressure from any individual on a Board of Commissioners or any governing body or an assessor in any municipality to raise an assessment, to lower an assessment, to grant a deduction, to disallow a deduction. It basically keeps the office pure in a way, moving forward. So, the function of assessor, and this is basically what my job is, is to provide fair and equitable assessments throughout the township. Real property must be assessed at the same standard of value to ensure that every property owner is paying his or her fair share of the property tax. So, in theory, two properties in the municipality that have the same market value should essentially be paying the same amount of taxes. Assessments are based on and reflected of market value, whether through revaluation, reassessment, or compliance, and I'll speak to those different things in the next few minutes. Changes in assessed value are reactive to market conditions with the purpose of ensuring equitable tax distribution among the taxpayers. So, one of the ways that assessments are changed are through revaluation, which as many of you might know, the Essex County Board of Taxation with the teeth of the state have ordered the township for evaluation for 2021. So, it's something that's going to be coming in the next few years. Evaluations might be needed when properties in a taxing district are not being assessed at the same rate of true value and/or are being assessed substantially below or above true market value. Over time, market conditions change and periodically assessments need to be updated to compensate for that. The purpose of a revaluation is to correct inequities within the township and create uniformity throughout the assessments. Market conditions, as I was alluding to before, have differing effects on different types of properties. Either different areas of town might become more desirable or less desirable to live and because of that, the market reacts to it and prices will either go up or down. Different styles of home might be more or less desirable. You know, taking a home like a split level, for instance, I mean, if you're familiar with split level homes, I don't think one's been built since the 1970s. It's not such a desirable style anymore, and the market reacts to that. Common misperception is that evaluations are done to increase tax revenue for the township. That's inaccurate. The reason, the function of the revaluation is to achieve a more fair and equitable distribution of the total tax levels. Evaluations are typically performed when ordered by the state. The State Division of Taxation and County Tax Board also act in a regulatory manner approving the revaluation contract, the revaluation firm, and the tax maps. Evaluations are contracted and performed by a private firm under the supervision of the assessor. And the reason why evaluations are most typically performed when ordered by the state is because it's a very expensive process, also very timely, but it's a very large contract that has to be assumed by the taxpayers of the municipality. But during a revaluation program, every property within the township is inspected and revalued, no matter what type of property it is, be it residential, commercial, exempt, or vacant land. Another way that assessments are adjusted is through a reassessment. It's similar to a revaluation in most regards where you're changing the value of every property within the township. But a reassessment program only requires approval from the county. The state doesn't get involved. They're often or typically performed in-house by a qualified assessor and staff as determined by the County Board of Taxation. However, there are municipalities that do contract out and have a revaluation firm conduct them. The township's last reassessment was for the 2010 tax year. When conducted in-house, the cost of the taxpayer is little to none. Another form of, another way that assessments are adjusted is through a compliance plan. This is also performed in-house by a qualified assessor. The assessor must give notification in writing to the municipal governing body, the County Board of Taxation, and the County Tax Administrator of the reasons why certain property in the taxing district is warranted, as well as providing supporting documentation and statistical evidence. And I have on this slide the form that's actually submitted to the County Tax Board, and along with that is typically spreadsheets that show that certain areas of town might in fact be over-assessed or under-assessed, and that adjustments to the land value might need to be warranted, which brings me to the next point, that during the compliance plan, only land values are able to be adjusted. You can't adjust the building value. Land values are changed consistently and uniformly within a designated VCS. VCS is an assessment term, but it's basically an area of town. When a revaluation or assessment, any type of adjustment, well, I guess I should say more broadly, that throughout the town, there's different neighborhoods, and each of them are assigned a unique land formula for that neighborhood. The reason this is done is that certain areas might be more desirable than others. Perhaps, you know, a property in Nutley Park should have a different land value than perhaps a property on Essex Ave. And, you know, the same can be said throughout the entire municipality. Nutley has 64 different assessing neighborhoods, and they're delineated based on the geography and their zoning. The land formula is the same for each property within that neighborhood, and thus that promotes equity among the assessments. One of the rules of the compliance plan is that in a given year, you cannot change more than 50% of land values in the township. If there's a need to adjust more than 50%, then a compliance plan wouldn't be a solution for the municipality. It would have to, either reassessment or evaluation would have to be conducted. As I mentioned with the reassessment, the cost to taxpayers is little to none as it's done in-house. There's other ways of reducing assessment, but the three I just spoke about are macro changes, changes that are either the entire municipality or sections of the municipality. Individually, everybody has the right to appeal their assessment. Every year, they can apply, they can file their appeal with the County Tax Board or the State Tax Court. Every year, there's an April 1 deadline unless it's a revaluation year, then the deadline's pushed to May 1. Properties assessed under $1 million must, can't file straight to the State Tax Court. Their appeal must start at the County Tax Board. I'm sorry, yeah, that's in the court. Part of the process of an appeal is that it's a burden of proof of the appellant to prove that their assessment is wrong. The way the laws are set up here in New Jersey is that an assessor and the assessment are assumed correct. It's the petitioner or the appellant who needs to prove that, to prove that the assessment is wrong. For residential properties, that's typically done by finding comparable sales of property similar to yours or the homeowner's, and showing that these properties would in fact call for a decrease in the assessed value. What we also offer here, what I offer here, I should say, in Nutley, we have, I have the form here on the slide, a formal assessment review. A property owner can appeal, it's informal but can appeal directly to my office or to myself. I hold the taxpayer to the same standard that the County Tax Board or State Tax Court would, where they have to prove that their assessment is wrong, but they can come straight to me, basically filling out this form and giving me some comparable sales that might prove that their home is in fact over-assessed. This form's available on the Nutley website, and then if any change, if I were to find that a property is in fact over-assessed, any change is always for the following tax Assessments are also increased over time. When people do construction, when people can renovate their homes, put additions on their home, any type of, a lot of types of construction, I should say, will increase the value of the property and therefore an added assessment is warranted. There could be for many different types of things, a renovated kitchen, a renovated bath, adding a garage, a fireplace, a patio, porch. These are filed once a year with the County Board of Taxation statutorily on October 1st, but they're already, always prorated back to the date that the construction is complete. So, bringing up spot assessing, it's important that adjustments are applied on an area-wide basis, where I talked about the revaluation or reassessment, changing all the values in the municipality, or a compliance plan changing certain areas of towns or neighborhoods of towns, if you will, of the town, if you will. I can't just, let's say a property sells for, I'm going to just make up a number, $400,000, and I have it assessed at $300,000. I can't just go change that number. It's called spot assessing. It's discriminatory. Time and time again, courts have overruled any type of spot assessments. And I think that's kind of what I'm being brought here to address, is that there's been accusations that my predecessor or my office before I worked here had changed or lowered certain individuals' values. It can't be done. Specifically, the values were the Board of Commissioners' values, that their land values were reduced. What in fact happened were there was compliance plans conducted where different areas of town were adjusted and their land values were reduced to speak to softness in the market to address that there are areas of town that were over-assessed. So, yes, all the commissioners, their land values were assessed, but they were assessed at the same equitable rate that that neighborhood would entail. So, if one of the commissioners was reduced, everybody in that neighborhood was reduced. And in fact, over 99% of the properties in town were reduced at least once, but mostly multiple times to react to changes in the market. Just to give a brief history of, recent history of what's gone on in our office and what's gone on with the assessments of the township, there was an assessment, there was a revaluation conducted in 2006. It was the first revaluation that was conducted since 1977. All the properties in the township were inspected and valued by a contracted revaluation firm. Because it had been so long, well, I should actually backtrack a little bit, there's a formula called the equalization ratio, which the State Division of Taxation maintains. And the state polls all the sales in the town and compares them to the assessments and comes up with a ratio of where the assessments are in relation to true market value. So, since it had been so long since the last revaluation, at that point, and before the revaluation was conducted, our assessments were only at 13.24% of market value. After the revaluation, it was brought up to 100% of market value. Thusly, because of the change in the aggregate of assessment, the tax rate was reduced from $15.66 to $2.05. In 2010, an in-house reassessment was conducted by my predecessor. In 2010, an in-house reassessment was conducted by my predecessor. Assessors were updated. He updated the values to react to market conditions. As we know, that there was a housing bubble, there was a housing crisis, and subsequently, values started to get softer from the heights of 2006, 2007. Because the assessment base was reduced from 2010 with the reassessment, the tax rate therefore went up. So the tax rate went from $2.383 to $2.77. Over years, multiple compliance plans were performed, reducing different areas of town. As I said, most areas, over 99% of the areas, at least once, most twice, and some areas even more than that, to react to that softening in the market. Hoffen erosion's also had a major impact on the, our assessment base. In 2013, before the closure was announced, the Hoffen erosion properties were assessed at $313 million. Subsequently, through a loss of value, and especially through demolition, the assessments were reduced in 14 to $227 million, and 15 to $125 million. That's in assessed dollars. In tax dollars, that lift about $6 million in flux. From 2006 to 2015, the aggregate of assessed values, which is the total assessed values for all the taxpaying properties in town, went from $4.15 trillion, or billion, I should say, to $3.23 billion. And as I mentioned before, it's attributed to the housing bubble, to Hoffen erosion, overall just, you know, softening of market conditions. Recently, we've had a very strong housing market in town, and that's led to what I spoke about before, the equalization ratio. Because the market value's increasing and the assessments are staying relatively the same, that's leading to the equalization ratio being lower. And then in 2021, well, we're going to be doing it all again for a townwide revaluation. And I just wanted to, I should have probably mentioned at the top, if anybody ever wants to speak about their assessment, if they ever have any questions, my office is open Monday through Friday. I'm right here in this building on the first floor. You can't miss me. That's my telephone number there, 973-284-4956. I'm part-time. I'm here Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, but I have an assistant who's here every day. And even when I'm not here, I'm readily available via email.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioner?
And just a quick question. If someone was to take a look at the change in the tax rate over time, they would have to consider the drop in assessed value, of the overall assessed value of the town over time, in order to back out the tax rate change as a result of the lower assessed value?
Absolutely. I mean, really, the change in the tax rate, especially when you're talking about large changes, is really attributed to, you know, changes in assessed value or changes in market. So, I mean, I always use the example that, let's say that right now, I doubled every, uniformly doubled every assessment throughout the township. Mathematically, the tax rate would cut in half. That's just how, or if I reduce everybody from 50, by 50%, then the tax rate would go up 50%.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more short presentation. During our conference meeting, we had members of the planning board give us a report on the recommendations for mixed-use density, and I'm going to have Ms. Tangora and Mr. Arcuti come up to summarize their presentation.
Thank you very much for having us here this evening. Mark Arcuti was head of the county tax board. I'm going to introduce him.
Some time ago, first, my name's Mark Arcuti. I'm the vice chairman of the planning board of the zoning committee. The zoning committee of the planning board was asked to address some concerns regarding density in our town by the zoning board and the code enforcement. Currently, there is no density requirement in the books for mixed use. Before I go on, because I don't want to forget later, I want to thank the members of the zoning committee, Lorraine, Jerry Deltofo, Anthony Moffatano, and the entire planning board. We spent a lot of time, many hours, great input, great ideas, and that's how we came to this presentation I'm about to give. We came up with the density of 28 units per acre, which is pretty much in line with our surrounding towns. Some towns are more, some towns are a little bit less. We also came up with 30% of the first floor to be retail and/or non-residential. What that will do is that will make the retail spaces a little bit bigger and a little bit more versatile, nothing too small. How we're going to help that is by changing the, slightly changing the parking requirements. A one-bedroom apartment will have two bedrooms, will require two parking spaces, and half a parking space for every bedroom thereafter. Also, we determined that residential and then mixed-use building will only be allowed in B2 and B3 zones. B3A and all the other zones where mixed use isn't allowed, residential will not be allowed. You know, as I said earlier, and that's just a brief summary of what we came up with. But this is a result of many, many hours of hard work, and we met several times, this has been going on, this has been going on, this particular part of the project, it's been going on since last April. We came up with a great solution to an issue that many people have addressed for many months now. Commissioners, we've done all the labor. We brought this way, way down the road. We're urging you and asking you to please bring it to the finish line. Zoning board wants it, code enforcement wants it, and the people want it, so I think we should give them what they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioners?
Any comments?
Just want to thank you and the planning board and your committee for all the hard work. Know that you put in a lot of hours and a lot of research, and we really appreciate your time and efforts in bringing your recommendations to us. So I want to thank you for all your efforts.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Tangora?
Thank you for having us here this evening, and I hope that you will take the work that you've done very, very seriously. We've waited a long time for this, and it's the hope of everyone that you all act on it as judiciously possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tangora. All right, let's go to minutes.
Yes, Mayor, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for April 3, 2018. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for May 1, 2018. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Communications.
We have three event applications, and I will read them together, and then we'll vote at once. The Van Riper Trust has submitted an event application to hold their street fair on Franklin Avenue between Center Street and Harrison Street on Sunday, September 2nd, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Mayor Joseph Scarpelli has submitted an application for the Fourth of July celebration to be held on Wednesday, July 4th, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Franklin Avenue between Church Street and Chestnut Street. And the Nutley-Belville Columbus State Committee has submitted an event application to hold their annual 36th Columbus Day Parade along Franklin Avenue to the Oval in Nutley on Sunday, October 7, 2018, from 12:00 to 4:30. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Let's go to reports. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a report for the Code Enforcement Department for the month of May 2018.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shea tree report for the month of May 2018.
Bills, Madam Parker?
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for June 7, 2018.
Excuse me, can you turn the volume up or something? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Hearing me?
Yeah, very faint.
I don't have a volume. Do I have a volume?
I can speak louder.
I can speak louder.
That's better.
Better? Okay.
Excellent.
Bill list for June 7, 2018. Public Affairs, $118,260.98. Revenue and Finance, $2,504,662.98. Public Safety, $807,323.35. Public Works, $113,687.75. Parks and Public Property, $792,565.39. Water Utility, $86,127.25. Payroll overtime for May 18, 2018. Total payroll for May 18 is $872,935.38. Payroll overtime for June 1, 2018. Overtime payroll total is $40,379.71. Total payroll for June 1, 2018 is $841,930.74, for a grand total of $6,130,893.82.
Move the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Parker?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Glory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, on the bill list, what is South Jersey Energy? With the last page?
Oh, that's mine.
That's what?
South Jersey, yeah, I used to, I used to, Mayor Scarpelli, I'm sorry. South Jersey Energy, that's, we belong to a Standard Energy meeting. It's similar to a Jiffy, where they have a reverse auction, and we get reduced rates on both our electricity and our gas.
And you buy it from the, you work with brokers?
We buy it from them, correct. Yes, we're part of a consortium, a statewide consortium.
Is that in bulk or is that individual? The only reason I'm asking is there's just so many of them.
It's in bulk, all right? And everyone in the consortium shares in the savings. And I believe, don't hold me to this, but I believe the savings run anywhere to 15% to 20% less than we ordinarily would pay through public service.
Now, is this, I'm just trying, I know there's, with the brokers, it's the work for public service.
I'm sorry, you know it's what?
I said I used to work for public service. I understand the brokers, now you're buying it through somebody else.
Right.
But we're still using public service. Is there?
Yeah, nothing changes. The only thing that changes is who we pay this for, but transmission is all over public services network.
They have tremendous.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to address?
It's a great program, by the way. Saved us a lot of money over the years.
Sorry, Commissioner. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? What are Commissioner announcements? Any announcements, Commissioners?
One announcement. Last night, we had our countdown to kindergarten event. It was the first one. We had approximately 100 children and 200 parents there, so that our youngsters can begin to socialize with each other and meet each other, and hopefully be in the same classes with one another, and it was a, it was a great success. I just want to thank my Parks Department for all the effort they put forth, and it's programs like this that keeps our town together and keeps everyone with that great sense of community that we have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other announcements, Commissioners? Sure, go, Commissioner.
Sure. I want to just enhance on what Commissioner Tucci said. I might sound like a broken record, but this is a very important.
No, no, not at all.
Important topic nationally, as well as locally. These recreation programs that you have, especially now you're talking about kindergarten age, it's important to understand that when children get in a structured environment at an early age, sports, any athletic program, the music programs we have in the schools, you're beginning to keep them away from trouble. You're keeping them away from going in a direction that would be real problems for parents down the road. And I guess I'll repeat this forever, because I see the results. I absolutely see the results, and I can tell you, Commissioner, there are parents in this town that are seeing the results. So I just want to again thank you for the work you're doing down there at the Parks Department.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have one announcement. The farmer's market will begin on July 17th. New location, Parking Lot 9, which is next to Chickalini's, and it's from 92. So the farmer's market will start up, and that'll run through October. So for announcements, let's move into ordinance introductions. Commissioner Petracco?
Yes, thank you. I have one to the 3388 introduction, the ordinance amended ordinance codified in the code of the township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Section 76, entitled vehicles. Excuse me. Do you want me to start over? Particularly Section 17 entitled Vehicles Over Designated, We Excluded to Add to the Location Set For. I move that disordinance be passed for a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with notice required by law and further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading of July 3, 2018.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
He just stepped away.
Okay. Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Ordinance number 3388, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7. Special Zones and Areas, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking to Add 102 Brookdale Avenue and 183 Park Avenue. I move that disordinance be passed to second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law and the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its next reading on July 3, 2018. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Ordinance number 3389 for introduction, ordinance to amend, and ordinance codified in the code of the township of Nutley, Chapter 228, Vehicles and Traffic, to add Article 16, Section 56, entitled Do Not Block the Box. I move that disordinance be passed to second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law and the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on July 3, 2018. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Ordinance for introduction, 3390, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the township of Nutley, Chapter 13, Police Department, Article 3, entitled Extra Duty Assignments, particularly Section 15 and Section 16. I move that disordinance be passed to second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law and the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on July 3, 2018. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you.
Move on to public hearings, Commissioner.
Yes, I have a public hearing, an ordinance on number 3384, an ordinance to amend, ordinance codified in the code of the township of Nutley, Chapter 673, entitled Vehicles Empowerment, which is our towing ordinance. I'll open the public portion of the meeting.
Anybody who'd like to be heard on ordinance number 3384? Seeing none?
Moves the closest.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I move the ordinance.
Aye.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
I have two resolutions regarding health, and one, uh, they're both important, but one is really important. Uh, resolution number 139-18, recognize the month of June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Now, look, on this issue of Alzheimer's, we have, uh, across the country, you know, as our populations get older, uh, a lot of people are getting inflicted with this disease, and to my surprise, I've learned that even people in their upper forties and fifties could begin to get inflicted with this. So it's important that the public, uh, maybe gets an education on this, the signs of this. Uh, I could tell you with, uh, the Police Department, Commissioner Petracca and I have teamed up over the years to ensure that two things happen in Nutley. One, uh, you come to the Public Health Department if you feel that there's someone in your home who may be inflicted by this Alzheimer's disease, and two, if they are, we get bracelets. They have a log of the people in the Police Department that have Alzheimer's because, I'll tell you what, even when I was on the Police Department, many times we would see a car stopped in the middle of traffic. We'd get out and a person wouldn't know who they are or where they're from. So this is some serious business when it comes to Alzheimer's, and I, I would just ask that people get educated with regard to that. Uh, so I move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, and I, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Rogers', um, words. It's unbelievable that, that the seniors that we have with, um, this issue, Commissioner, and how much time it takes to locate that person for their loved ones, and it, it's really heartfelt because when you have grandkids crying at the police station or, or parents and, you know, they're looking for their elderly mom or dad, it's, um-
Frightening.
It's frightening, so I, I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
All right, the second one is to recognize the month of June as Men's Health Month.
I'm sorry. I, I just need Mayor Scarpelli to, uh- Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Okay, the second one is regarding the recognition of Men's Health, uh, Month, another issue. By the way, you lose some weight? You look pretty good. The epitome of good health right next to me. We're recognizing men's, gotta have some fun, gotta have some. Uh, we're recognizing and heightening awareness of Men's Health Month because I've said before that we are probably the worst, worst in when it comes to men's health. Women do a great job. They go to the doctors, they get checked, on and on. We don't. And unfortunately, many, many times, it's when a near tragedy strikes that we rush to the doctors and we scratch our heads and we say, you know, we should have went. So the purpose of this is simply is to heighten awareness. I know people watch. A lot of people watch, probably a little bit more than CNN. Uh, the fact of the matter is, they're watching these, these telecasts. Uh, so I really speak to them as well as I speak to people here because, uh, we need to really step it up when it comes to health, especially when you have children and grandchildren, wouldn't you say? You know, we shouldn't cheat, cheat them out. And Doc, I'm sure you'd agree with me. You're a doctor.
Absolutely.
Moro, Tucci, you agree with me, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay, I move this resolution.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Commissioner, did I see on, uh, the bulletin board on, on your Public Affairs building that you have a memory screening program going on?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we have, we have a lot of great services in town. I'm glad you mentioned that. And, uh, there is loss of memory. People, you know, there, there are reasons why they lose memory, and there are methods and there's programs and there's therapies to help strengthen, uh, that part of the brain. Thanks, very important.
Thank you. I commend you on that.
Thank you very much. Okay, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That Commissioner Tucci, I forgot, I forgot it was there. I had to throw that in there.
Can't make this up.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards, you're back right on time.
Yeah, thank you.
Resolutions.
Uh, yes, so I have several resolutions. Uh, I had to step out to take a phone call, um, because I'm trying to follow the state and what, what the status is of our aid. Uh, so I don't have any news to report. I just got a phone call now to tell me there's nothing to, to report yet. Uh, so just, we're just trying to stay on top of it, uh, and we're doing, doing the best we can to, to track it. Everything I've been told so far, you know, knock on wood, uh, that, you know, the, the amount of money that, amount of aid that we've requested, we haven't been told we're not going to get it. Uh, but again, it's too early. Uh, later, uh, over the next couple of weeks, we'll get clarification. Uh, so with that, uh, let me just go through the resolutions. Uh, given the, uh, fact that the state budget, uh, is in flux and we, uh, need, uh, we've made a request for aid, we cannot finalize our municipal budget, which means the county cannot certify, uh, the tax rate. The county, uh, rate itself is in flux because they're expecting aid as well. So it requires that we need to anticipate, uh, doing an estimated tax bill, uh, for the third quarter. Uh, and hopefully before we have to do the fourth quarter bill, and hopefully in the next few weeks we'll be able to finalize the 2018 budget. So with that, uh, uh, this resolution authorizes us to do an estimated tax bill for the, uh, uh, third quarter only, uh, for 2018. Whereas due to the delay in the approval of the state aid figures in 2018 budget, this Essex County Board of Taxation is unable, unable to certify, uh, the tax rate for 2018. Whereas without a certified rate, the tax structure of the township is, will be unable to issue the 2018 bills on a ti- in a timely manner, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners. One, the tax collector of the township is hereby authorized and directed to prepare and issue estimated tax bills, uh, for the township of Nutley for the third installment for 2018. The tax collector shall proceed and take action as permitted and required by Chapter 72 Public Laws, 1994, and NJSA 54:4-66.2 and 54:4-66.3. The total estimated tax levy for 2018 is hereby set at, uh, one hundred and fifteen million, uh, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. The total estimated tax rate is hereby set at, uh, three dollars, uh, and fifty-three, uh, point seven cents. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the Treasurer of the NCH is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges of four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixteen cents for the accounts listed in this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, uh, Township of Nutley that the Treasurer of the NCH is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes arising from tax court judgments totaling six thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars for the accounts listed in this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Uh, the next resolution, the next resolution establishes our petty cash fund for the Department of, uh, Revenue and Finance pursuant to NJSA 48:5-21. Uh, it's deemed necessary to designate a custodian for this. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the custodian is Kathy Repashevsky, and she will be bonded, for the surety bond in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Be further resolved that two-thirds of certified copies of this resolution be submitted to the Director of the Division of Local Governmental Services for approval. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Uh, the next, uh, three resolutions all relate to the fact that we need to continue to operate under a temporary budget approval that's authorized by statute. So the next three resolutions will cover the water utility, our, uh, uh, bond interest and principal, uh, payments as well as the operating budget. So first one is 143-18, whereas NJSA 48:20 provides that there are, where contracts, commitments, or payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2018, uh, water utility budget, emergency appropriations may be lawfully made for the purposes and the amounts required in the manner and, and time therein provided. Uh, now therefore be resolved in accordance with NJSA, uh, 48:4-20. One, the emergency a temporary appropriation, uh, and be, and the same is hereby made for a total of one million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. And said appropriation will be provided for in the 2018, uh, water utility budget for the accounts that are listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Whereas New Jersey statutes NJ, uh, 48:419 provides that where debt service is to be paid in the, in 2018 prior to the time of the final adoption of the budget, a temporary appropriation shall be made for the amount of such debt service in the manner and time therein provided. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the, uh, temporary appropriations be made in the current fund for, uh, bond interest, bond principal, green acres, loan principal and interest, and in the water operating, uh, budget, the, uh, NJEIT trust principal, uh, trust interest and, uh, um, and trust fund, uh, uh, principal for the amounts that are listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas NJSA 48:20 provides, 4-20 provides that, uh, contracts, commitments, or payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2018 budget. Emergency appropriations may be lawfully made for the purposes and the amounts required in the manner and time therein provided. Uh, now therefore be resolved that in accordance with NJSA 48:4-20, one, an emergency temporary appropriation being the same as hereby made for the total amount of eleven million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, said appropriation will be provided for in the 2018 budget for the accounts that are listed in the resol- resolution for all of the operating departments of the township. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Uh, my last resolution is for the, uh, annual audit. Uh, the audit for, uh, 2017 was conducted by a, a registered municipal accountant, Nizavachi, uh, and, uh, Nizavachi and Company. The, uh, report was completed and it needs to be filed, uh, within six months after the completion of the work, which would be June 30th. Um, now, whereas NJSA 48:5-4 requires the governing body of every local unit to have made an annual audit of its books, accounts, and financial transactions. Whereas the annual report of the audit for the year 2017 has been filed by a registered municipal accountant with the municipal clerk pursuant to NJSA, uh, 48:5-6, and a copy has been received by each of the members of the governing body. Uh, whereas RS 52:27BB34 authorizes the local finance, finance board of the state of New Jersey to prescribe reports pertaining to local fiscal affairs. And whereas the local finance board has promulgated a regulation requiring that the governing body of each municipality shall by resolution certify to the local finance board of the state of New Jersey that all members of the governing body have reviewed as a minimum the sections of the annual report entitled General Comments and Recommendations. Whereas the members of the governing body have personally reviewed as a minimum the annual report of, of audit, specifically the sections of the annual audit entitled General Comments and Rec- Recommendations as evidenced by the group affidavit form of the governing body attached here too. Whereas each, whereas such resolution of certification shall be adopted by the governing body no later than forty-five days after the receipt of the annual audit pursuant to NJAC 5:36-5. And whereas all members of the governing body have received and familiarized themselves with at least the minimum requirements of the local finance board of the state of New Jersey as stated, after said, and have subscribed to the affidavit as provided by the local finance board. Whereas failure to comply with the local finance board may subject members of the local governing body to, uh, penalty provisions. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley hereby states that it has complied and does hereby submit a certified copy of this resolution and the required affidavit to said board to show evidence of said compliance. We, members of the governing body of the Township of Nutley, uh, County of X, is duly sworn and according to law upon oath deposed and say, one, we are duly elected members of the Board of Commissioners in performance of our duties. We have familiarized ourselves with the contents of the, uh, annual audit, uh, the annual municipal audit filed with the clerk. We certify that we have personally reviewed and are familiar with, as a minimum, the, uh, section entitled Comments and Recommendations. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Petracca?
Whereas sale bids for furnishing and delivering police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment were publicly opened and read on May 23rd, 2018. Whereas turnout uniforms is the only bidder, and whereas the funds in the amount of forty-eight thousand are available in appropriation titled 8-01-310-200 Police and Dispatcher Maintenance and Allowance, and the funds in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred are available in appropriation titled 8-01308-200 Crossing Guards Allowance, and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey that a contract for furnishing and delivering police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment insistent with the 2018 Clothing Voucher Allocation be, and hereby awarded to turnout uniforms. 195 Patterson Ave, Little Falls, New Jersey. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of a professional engineer to assist the township with defending itself against a tort claim made by Hop on the Roche and other environmental issues as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944A 20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. Whereas the Chief Financial Officer has determined in certified and writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for January 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2018 will not exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract in accordance with NJSA 1944A 20.4 or 20.5 with McDonald Professional Engineering Services for the proposal as stated above. Be further resolved that the business disclosure entity certificate and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk has received written notification from Nutley Post 30, American Veterans of World War II, holder of Club Liquor License Number 071631031001, and that their membership has voted that they no longer wish to renew said license. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby terminates Club Liquor License Number 071631031001 issued to the Nutley Post 30, American Veterans of World War II, 184 Park Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, effective June 7th, 2018. And be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the State of New Jersey Office of the Attorney General, Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control and Order Dissolve Club Liquor License Number 071631031001. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the forum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Michael O'Dreary, 133 High Street. Mr. Mayor, our tax rate last year was 3.473. It's being increased to 3.537. And from what I remember, last year, state aid, we used to get 5.5 million, and last year it was reduced to 3.6 million. My question is, this year's state aid, are we going to get 5.5 million back? For state aid, are we going to get 5.5 million? Yes or no? Or do you know?
I don't think you listened to Commissioner Evans when he came back, is that we have not gotten any...
I'm sorry, the appropriate way of stating the question, do you think we're going to get 5.5 million back? That's what I meant to say, I'm sorry.
We're hopeful we're going to get 5.5 million.
Okay. Well, the reason why I'm asking is because, I mean, if I work for the county or the state, and I look at Nutley, and I would say to myself, they need 5.5 million, the same way we gave it to them back in 2016, I think it was. But if they're going to buy property like Chickalini's and the bike shop, I mean, what else are the town leaders of Nutley are going to buy? And if they have money for that, why would we give them 5.5 million? And then another thing comes up. June 19th, there's going to be salary range increases. The state is going to look at that too, so they have enough money to give town employees higher, even higher salaries. I mean, do you think that's going to help our chance to get 5.5 million in state aid if this board is just doing this, you know, giving money away?
Mr. Andre, I don't follow your premise because I don't think we're giving money away. The things we've done in the past were things that we think are responsible to the future of this town, and we will see what the state does, and we're very hopeful and we're encouraged by everything that we've heard from the state that we will be getting the 5.5 million dollars. Commissioner Evans, you want to add anything?
Well, I mean, I sure hope you do.
Excuse me a second. Commissioner Evans, you want to add anything?
Michael, the things that you raised, right, one, I think you're taking certain points out of context to try and sensationalize it for a purpose.
There's no sensation, it's all about money.
And I would, it's my turn?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So to be factual, the points that you've raised, the purchase of the bike shop was discussed with the state, the purchase of the Chickalini property was discussed with the state, the review of our budget was fully discussed with the state, because I had to sit with them and walk through that and provide a justification of that, and after that review, the state agrees that Nutley should receive aid. The only thing that's left for us to determine at this point in time is how much. And as presently is stated, as you indicated, the tax rate is going up. Why is it going up? Because statutorily, we are not allowed to anticipate $550,000 with the revenue. So if we get the same amount of aid as we got the previous year, the tax increase goes down because we're able to now recognize that revenue. Okay? Very, very significant point. The other points that are in our increase is related to bills. One is the increase in our sewage bill of $194,000, an increase in our pension bill of $389,000, and lower actual revenue in our water utility than what was anticipated due to lower consumption of $343,000, $341,000. And you know this because it's all posted on the social media site in certain segments in a certain way. So the point that I'm raising with you is, one, this board has worked very, very hard and very diligently to look at the issues that are going on in town and to try and address them in a very competent way. And I would be happy to sit down with you and go through all of the information that needs to be for you to have a better understanding of what it costs to manage a municipality so that you would understand your taxes better, and I'd be happy to do that with you. In fact, I've offered that many, many times to anybody who's willing to sit down and understand both the revenue and the appropriations that we have to address. So to your point is, we didn't leave anything out. There's no point or merit to any statement that's been raised in the past that suggests that somehow our aid was cut last year because we purchased the Chickalini property or we purchased the Davis property, because it's absolutely untrue and factually a lie. So the point of all of this is, it's important that I would be happy to sit down with you to walk through the facts so that we avoid the misleading points that continue to actually plague our town. My hope very strongly is, we've made a request for $5.5 million with the aid. If we just get the 3.6 million we got last year, we will be able to reduce our budget increase by $550,000, which will be a win for the town. Every penny above $3.6 million is a win. And right now, I haven't been given any indication that our aid will be cut below the level of 2017, nor have I been told that our request for 5.5 million lacks merit, and therefore we would be denied. The only thing that would cause us to lose aid will be structural changes in the state budget negotiations that are going on right now before they adopt the budget for 2018.
Okay. But if you just asked only for 5.5 million, how come you couldn't ask for any more? 7.5 million?
Sure.
You know, I would have asked for 10 million.
I can go down and ask them for 20 million dollars. I can go down there, and I have, with representing this full Board of Commissioners and some of their predecessors, have pointed out to the state that asks very basic questions. One, why does Nutley get $11 million in school aid when our surrounding towns get more? Why? What's the basis for that? Right? Why, in the municipal aid, basic municipal aid, why does Nutley get 3.4 million, 3.2 million of base structural aid when our surrounding community actually gets $7 million or more? The significance of that is, as you well imagine, is significant for every taxpayer in town, and we've been arguing that since 2006. And the challenge that we have is that in order to fix it, the state legislature has to actually adopt new laws to change the aid formula, which right now, no one in the state legislature is willing to actually put forth a new formula. They're structurally trying to fix it. So right now, the suggestion that a new budget that says we are going to try and do, they're going to try and increase funding to the school formula, if they accomplish that, Nutley wins because we'll get more aid.
And property taxes will go down, be reduced?
The whole point of getting that aid is to reduce property taxes, yes, absolutely.
Because I'm sure every homeowner in this town...
Michael, let's let me be really clear about something. Every one of the commissioners up here is a taxpayer too. I don't want to pay increase to property taxes. I get first look at what my taxes are going to go up every year because when we get done with the budget, we have to do that. No one here ever wants to arbitrarily, in a capricious way, increase taxes. We face, we are faced with, for example, what do you do when you get a bill for $194,000 from Passaic Valley Sewer Company saying your sewer charge is going up? Do we tell people that they have to manage their sewage and provide less sewage so the bill goes down? We have to do that. When we have an increase in, you see the fuel prices that are going down, gas prices go up, oil prices go up, we're no different than anybody else.
But they also go down too.
We all have to do it, yes, and all have to do it. And if you go look structurally, not just Nutley, but structurally in the state of New Jersey, there's a challenge with property tax because of the nature of the state laws that drive property tax as the solution to funding much of what the state needs. So I appreciate your concern. In fact, there's no one that's more frustrated about looking at a tax increase than this Board of Commissioners. Every time we sit down and we work really, really hard, and we worked very hard on the introduction of the 2018 budget to actually reduce a $2.9 million projected increase, and we worked very hard to do that, and at the very end, we got very close and we actually got bills that we couldn't compensate for.
Well, from one fellow homeowner to another Nutley fellow homeowner, how about consolidation? With the other towns, have you ever talked to like Bloomfield and Belleville?
Sure.
Said, hey, look, you know, maybe we could put some of these public works and all that together?
Absolutely, there's...
Get one superintendent of schools for four towns maybe instead of having four different ones, you know?
So put that into perspective, Michael. It's a nice point, right? And no idea or suggestion is without merit. But put it into perspective, within a 10-mile radius of Franklin and Center, in this area there's 659,000 people. The density is enormous. So you might adjust the position here and there, but structurally, change it where you're going to reduce property taxes by some substantial amount of money? Not happening. Just impractical.
I think we should have a little bit more optimism.
But the point is, is that you make that suggestion, don't you think this Board of Commissioners has already thought about that? Don't you think Commissioner Petracca has a relationship with other municipalities and they talk about combining services? Health services is already combined and outsourced and it's a shared service. We've already combined garbage services with the school under one contract to avoid the double cost of that. Much of the work that's done in the Parks and Recreation Department is funded under grants. We have hired people to actually search this stuff for us.
So let me ask you, have you been doing that already?
So my point is, your suggestion that, haven't we considered that? I want to tell you, absolutely.
But since you have done that, so what is making our property taxes go up? Each homeowner like $300, $400 here? Is it like the pensions that we're forced to pay? Is it the salary increases of the town employees that were forced to pay because they, you know, because they can't cap, control, and reduce their life spending like we who work in the private sector do? Is that what's costing us more money?
Cost of services across the board in the state of New Jersey have risen dramatically since the early 2000s. Yes. Right? And when you think about, when you go back to the early 2000s, there was a period of time that the state had a moratorium on pension funding. Sure, property taxes stayed down then. Also, federal laws were different in terms of what the cost is and how you dispose of garbage, what's required under healthcare and the cost of healthcare, which is a state provided benefit, which we, if we wanted to offer and say in Nutley, we are not offering a pension benefit or we're not offering a healthcare benefit?
So you guys don't take healthcare benefits in your town?
Statutorily, statutorily, we're not allowed to do that. It's a state provided benefit. It's under the law. So there are restrictions that we are governed by at a municipal level, at all levels. You're forgetting, you know, what was the cost increase to secure the major utility sources for the country? Water, sewage, electrical, and the bonding that occurred, you know, several years ago to protect those sites because of the nature of terrorist activity and the threats that we face. They authorized bonding increase, huge bonds, to secure those sites. They don't pay for them. Comes out as a rate increase, and everybody who's part of the system has to pay that. So we get that bill, and that actually drives property taxes up because there isn't an ability to offset it.
All I know is this, if I ever got into politics, and trust me, I've thought about it, and that people have asked me to run and run in this town, and you know what? I would be, in all seriousness, I would be like a radical. I would go against the grain. I'd be like, no, we're not going to do that. Because the good people of just Nutley, Bloomfield, especially Nutley, you know, they're losing their homes. People are moving out, and they're being forced out.
Michael, what wouldn't you do? What wouldn't you do?
Well, what I'd do, I'll say no. We negotiate contracts.
You would say...
You know, and if they don't like what they're getting, you know what? Well, you know what you could do? You can go into another career. I mean, if you cannot appreciate what we give you and you want more, come on.
The answer, the bottom line is?
Well, how many of my neighbors have to move out?
The point is, I appreciate your frustration, and I appreciate that you feel as though that there is that liberty to say no, or the suggestion that it might even be that we're not. We negotiate very heavily, and the simple point is, we will continue to do that, but we have to face the reality of, when we get a bill, we are responsible for that, and we have to pass that on to a taxpayer. Or do like we have been doing, provide justification and fight for additional aid, or find another source of revenue.
Well...
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Would it be fair to say...
Michael.
You know, join the swamp?
Michael, time's up.
It really hits home when people say that. And it is a swamp here in New Jersey and in this County Essex and in this town.
Nutley's a wonderful town.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Mayor, can I make one more announcement?
Sure.
Before we adjourn, starting tomorrow evening at the high school, our Nutley Parks Department Theater Program will be presenting Shrek tomorrow's opening performance. It will also go on on Saturday at 7:00 o'clock and Sunday at 2:00 o'clock. And so, thank you for inviting me. I should probably take Commissioner Rogers' penalty. Of course, I almost forgot to announce the Franklin Spring Festival, which will be next Thursday, June 14th at 7:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Need a motion to go to executive session to discuss...
Contract negotiation litigation.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Whereas section aid of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, moving to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation, be it further resolved that at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be, when and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?